Guy, you're on.
Says I'm into meeting now.
Good.
Make sure. Hannah, thank you.
Turn to the...
Yes, okay, you're on.
Hello? Hello?
Can you confirm he's on?
Hey, Jimmy, are you on with us?
Are you there? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you.
Thank God. All right, I got it.
Mr. Tucker, are you on? You just spoke with him. He might have us on mute. All right. Well, it's time to start. We want to be respectful of everyone's time. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Kershaw County Council, September 24th, 2024. We've been called to order, and we've got an invocation and pledge to start us off tonight. That will be led by Pastor Quentin Chavis with Belmont Baptist Church. Speak into the mic if you want the folks to hear you.
I can do this way, okay?
Yes, sir.
Y'all be sure to tell Mary and Bennett I showed up on time, okay?
That's okay. We'll let them know. Thank you.
All right. Much, Father, we thank you now for this beautiful day that you placed on the calendar for us a long time ago, Lord, and all day long we have been rejoicing in this great day. We ask that you join now in this discussion that it might lead to things that be of benefit to the city, this county, and this state. Be a part of the discussion that will render the kind of fruit you would like it to yield. Master, we bless, ask you to bless now the sick and afflicted, the bereaved, the careless and unconcerned, Lord, that group we've labeled the careless and unconcerned. Bless them in a mighty way. Keep them ever in your care. Master, be a part of whatever's said and done here this day. Just a prayer in asking Jesus' name. Amen.
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 We will now stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Chavis. I'm going to use the chairman's prerogative to move one item up in the agenda. We've got a emergency labor situation with Mr. Gary Siegfried and his daughter with the SCAC presentation, council members. That was item 6B. We're going to move that up and have that public presentation right now. I'd seek a motion to suspend the 15-minute time restriction, though, given your situation, I don't know if you're going to need that much. Okay. If you would come on up.
Say another. He wouldn't. He wouldn't need that much time?
Yeah, he won't need.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, just get the mic a little closer. We can hear you better.
How's that?
Yep.
Very good.
All right. Well, thank you so much for moving me up. I appreciate that. Yeah, my daughter is in labor with my first grandchild, so it's...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Very exciting time, so I appreciate you doing this, this for me. And I appreciate you allowing me to be here to talk to you tonight about something that's become a very important topic in South Carolina, and that is the topic of compatible land uses around our airports. Going to just take, take a few minutes tonight. First, I'm going to just tell you about, real quick about my background, how I got to be here where I'm talking tonight about compatible land uses around airport. And then I'll dive into the meat of the topic, and it's really a big topic, but I've really pared my presentation way down. But I'll talk to you a little bit, just really quickly, about FAA and what they take, what their take is on compatible land uses around airports. And then after that, I'll dive into more about the, what the state says about it. And when, when I'm done with, with that state's, that state discussion, we'll talk about the, the local responsibilities. And then when I'm all done with that, if there's time, I might do a case study, just which kind of drives home why this is so important. When I get through the rest of that, I'll, I'll talk about one other thing. It's an online tool that we have. It's called the CLU tool. Your planning department's probably heard about that. My staff's been over here to, to meet with them, and, and that'll talk, or help, hopefully help you understand about some tools that are out there to help you with this topic. So just real quick, we'll start this with, just to gauge your thoughts on it, a survey. So I had one of my planners look for a plot of land with some neighborhoods around it, and I know where this is. These are some nice houses, a little bit pricey, and I know there's got to be pilots that live in this neighborhood. So the question is, would this be a good place to build an airport? Because we know pilots would love to have an airport close to their, to their homes. So you don't have to answer it, but just think, would you like, if you lived in one of these homes, would you like to have an airport, airport right in the middle of your neighborhood? We'll come back at the end. So what is compatible land use? Really good place to start is what's not compatible with an airport. So when we think about things that are noise sensitive, churches, schools, residential development, clearly those aren't compatible with an airport. Obstructions, anything that's going to compete with the airspace, anything that's going to make the pilot's life more difficult. And it's not just the pilot. If the pilot has trouble with obstructions, that makes people on the ground less safe as well. Density development. Most accidents take place either on takeoff or on landing. If, if a pilot is taking off from a runway and their engine goes out, the first thing they're going to do is look for an open plot of land to set down. And if there's dense development around the airport, that's not going to be possible. And then finally, wildlife. We have air, bird strikes every single day in South Carolina. We also have strikes with, with deer, turkey, other wildlife. So anything that draws wildlife to the vicinity of the airport is also not compatible. So what is the definition of compatible land use? The American Planning Association says that it's those uses that can coexist with a nearby airport without constraining the safe and efficient operations of the airport. There are also things that make sure that pilots are, stay safe, and any use that would not cause people on the ground to, to not be safe. I think I'd add one thing to that. An incompatible land use would also be something that, or anything that's going to hinder any future planned development at an airport. So your airport has an airport layout plan, which is its, its master plan, its vision for the future. So if somebody were to want to build something that would cause any of that development to not be able to, to be possible, then that would also be incompatible. Why should we care about this? Well, airports are part of our national transportation system, and at the state level and the FAA level, we put millions of dollars into our airports every single year. And so by protecting land uses around airports, we're protecting that investment, and that's a worthwhile investment, because the airports contribute a lot of money to our economy. In 2018, we've, we did an economic impact study for all of our airports. It's getting a little dated, so we know the numbers are higher now. But in 2018, our statewide economic impact was $16 billion coming out of the aviation sector and our airports, which led to about $655 million of tax revenue that came, came back to state and local governments, so that you all can do your jobs. Airports also provide facilities for medical emergencies, emergency relief, firefighting, things like that. And it's also a quality of life consideration. I already touched on this a little bit, but we need to think about, you know, the people that live on the ground around the airports. So it's not just about protecting the airport, it's also a quality of life issue. So the FAA actually has created quite a bit of guidance about incompatible land uses around airports. But the funny thing about the FAA is, they say that, that it's really up to the local government to control land uses. And I have to tell you, as, as the director of a state agency, a person who's trying to look out for our airports in South Carolina, I would love for the FAA to take a harder stand on this, but honestly, if, if they did, it would probably be federal overreach. So, you know, this is probably the place where it belongs, is here at the local government. But the FAA's guidance, or they said, one of the things they say about that is, the primary responsibility for integrating airport considerations into the local land use planning process rests with the local government. One place where they do take a little bit of a stand is in Federal Grant Assurance 21. Whenever you accept a grant from the FAA, one of the things you have to do is make some promises to them that you're going to comply with some grant assurances. Grant Assurance 21 is one that, that covers compatible land use. So what that says is, "It," and when they say "it," they mean the owner of the airport, "will take appropriate action to restrict the use of land adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of the airport to activities and purposes that are compatible with the airport." So they won't tell you what compatible land use looks like, but what they'll do is they'll push it down to you, for you to make your decisions on what that should look like. So what does South Carolina law say about this? Well, there's a little bit in Title VI, but the majority of, of our aeronautics regulations are found in Title 55. But starting in Title VI, Title VI, Chapter 29, this was the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of 1994. So in 1994, they said, they, first in 629710A, they defined the purpose of zoning, and then in paragraph five, they established the requirement to regulate the density and distribution of populations around airports and approaches. Jumping into Title 55, where the majority of our aeronautics regulations reside, just going through these in order from beginning to end, they're a little, they're a little out of order, probably in the organization, but just starting at the beginning and working down. 55-5-80K, this allows aeronautics to take action to abate hazards to aviation safety, and that includes land uses that have the potential to interfere with the airport or aircraft operations. 555190 requires that county and municipal officials give us help in, in enforcement of the chapter. 559240 requires that airports be zoned by county, municipal, or regional authorities to meet aeronautics or FAA requirements. 55, 559260 gives local planning officials the authority to develop zoning regulations. 55-9-270 addresses coordination when a cross jurisdictional situation exists, and we have quite a bit of that in South Carolina. It, it could either be a county-owned airport like you have with a city adjacent to it, or in the case of Aiken Regional Airport, that's a municipally-owned airport that is completely surrounded by the county. In, in both of those cases, this, this section gives them the ability to coordinate and, and talk amongst themselves, which, which would be great, because it, it is a, we find that that's probably one of our biggest problems when it comes to compatible land uses. 5513-5 requires local planning officials to take airport safety and operations into consideration when they're making land use decisions. 551310 gives local planning officials the authority to make rules and promulgate regulations which protect airport approaches or operations. So that's, that's what's in Title, Title 55 as concerns land uses. And so as you can see, there's quite a bit of information in there, but probably the, the main thing is that it, it pushes all of the decision-making down to the local governments. In 2012, Title 55 went through a pretty significant, significant update. That was before I arrived at, at aeronautics. But two of the, the major points of Title 55 is that aeronautics is required to prepare maps and provide local governments with airport safety and, and land use zoning maps for each of the public airports in the state of South Carolina. So we're supposed to make you maps that show you where the airport zones are. The second thing that Title 55 said was that local officials are to notify aeronautics if there's a development, a new planned development underneath one of those zones. So again, this is before my time, but to spread the message about these Title 55 changes, the aeronautics staff at that time, they went on, on a road tour. They set up meetings with airport owners, county officials, municipal authorities, you know, and it was probably not a whole lot different from what I'm doing today. But the problem is, the problem that I've found since I came over to aeronautics, is that staffs change. County staff changes, airport staff changes, councils change, and even inside my staff, aeronautics staff changes. So since I became director, this has become one of my major initiatives, is just to get out and start to, I guess, re-educate our county officials on, on what Title 55 says and on the importance of protecting our airport. So I've been doing this quite a bit lately. I've been going to conferences. I was in Hilton Head in November to present to the American Planning Association. I present to our South, South Carolina Airport Conferences. I've even done this at the national level with some, with our National Airport Conference. And of course, I've gotten out in front of quite a few county councils lately. So to talk, let's jump over now and talk about a tool that's available to your planning officials that will help you out with decide, or making land use decisions around airports. So while Title 55 was being rewritten, the Aeronautics Commission also hired a consultant to create a tool, and it's an online tool called the CLU Tool, which stands for Compatible Land Use Evaluation Tool. You recall, one of the things that we were supposed to do is create maps for every airport. Well, that's a huge task for us to do. So the way we handled that was by creating the CLU Tool, which is online, and when you go onto our website and log into the CLU Tool, you can see maps for every airport in the state, including Kershaw County's Woodward Field. This tool helps local developers and local planning officials by giving them a method for evaluating land uses. It also helps us out, because it gives us a standardized method to evaluate development proposals. But at this point, there's a really, really important message that I need to get across, and that is that we don't have regulations about land uses. We have recommendations about best practices, and our CLU Tool is not regulation. But recall, state law says, "We want you to, to create land use ordinances that'll take your airport into account." But most of our counties still don't have these ordinances put in place. So instead, we have the CLU Tool developed to help them out. So if we're going to review potential development, we have to have something to compare that development against. And what we have is a model zoning ordinance that was also created as part of the creation of the CLU Tool. The model zoning ordinance was, was put together by an airport planning consultant who has done this for other states, and it's based on best practices around airports. So just a couple of screenshots of the tool, kind of there in the middle of the tool, you can see the airport land use zones up in the upper right. There's a, one of the, a screenshot from an actual airport in South Carolina. And I guess just to kind of give you some perspective on how far across it is, it, the, the distance depends on how big the airport is and what type of runways it has, but about five miles, five to six miles across. So that gives you an idea about how big those zones are.
Mr. Siegfried?
Yes.
I'll just mention, if you need much more time, I know you're under a time crunch. We would just have a motion to extend the period of time. Public presentations are normally 15 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Do you need much more time, or?
No, I'm, in fact, I'm, I'm almost done. I'll skip, I'll skip...
I'm not trying to rush you, just as, as...
Yeah, maybe another five minutes?
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we extend the time up to 30 minutes, so that he can finish.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Those voting online, Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Tucker? Mr. Tucker on with us? Okay. He, he just told me he was on. Well, we'll, we'll say we can't get to him at the moment, and we'll move forward with that vote. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate that. All right. I'll go fast. All right. So the tool has two sides. It has a public side and, and a, an official side. The public side allows anybody to look at a development and get an idea of what best practices might say, but the official side has, is for local planning officials. And so that comes with login credentials. And what it allows the local planning officials to do is, when a case comes in for a permit review, they can actually put the information into the CLU Tool, hit submit, and it comes to our office for a review. When we review it, we'll have three possible findings. One is compatible, and if it's compatible, you're good to go. It could be conditional, and if it's conditional, then our finding will come with recommendations on what'll make it a compatible development. And then finally, incompatible. If, if we find that it's incompatible, then we would hope that the project would not be permitted. But again, remember, we don't have regulations about land uses, and we think they should be local. So if it is incompatible, and you decide as a county body that you want to proceed with the, the development, all we ask is that you just write us a letter and tell us the reasons for going forward. So what have we learned about this? First is, we use the model zoning ordinance to compare our, the developments against, and it's not one size fits all. The fact is that we have airports like the Greenville Downtown Airport, which has high-density development around it, and that can never fit in the model zoning ordinances, which is why we want the locals to create their own. Second, we don't want...
Second, we don't want to be in the business of telling you how to protect your airport. We want you to decide as a local body, decide as a local government and local planning officials, what is right for your community. And third, we would, we would like to render the CLU Tool obsolete. We'd like to get out of the business of reviewing development around airports, but we can't do that until every county has ordinances in place to protect their airports. And I think I'll, I'll go ahead and skip the case studies. We'll just jump up to the. So back to our, our survey. So, so I asked you if that was a good place to put an airport. I don't know what you, what you thought in your mind, but I, what I thought was, I sure wouldn't want an airport in the middle of my neighborhood. Well, this was actually photoshopped out. It's the Mount Pleasant Regional Airport in 2023. Here's what it looked like in 1995, a very rural community, nothing around it. 1999, we see the first signs of residential development to the west. 2007, southwest and northeast. 2014, sorry, new residential development to the east. 2016, more development to the east. And now the most recent aerial imagery. So if we don't think it's a good idea to bring the airport into the neighborhood, let's not bring the neighborhood to the airport. So with that, I thank you for your time. Open to any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Nope.
Actually, I won't be long, but I got a couple of questions, just to help me clarify things. So obviously, we're, we're in the middle of this, and there are people reaching out to us regarding churches and schools and homes and all these sorts of things. So I've looked at the, I think, the CLU Tool, and ours looks like a cross because we've got.
Yeah, two runways, right.
Two runways, right. So some of the parcels in question and some of the projects in question have fallen into different areas. So you're telling me that all three of those areas are up to our council to, to find appropriate or inappropriate. Is that true?
It's true. Yeah.
Okay.
Land use, yeah, land use decisions are, are local.
So when it comes to the FFA?
Yeah, the FAA, so the FAA cares about airspace.
FAA.
Yeah, they care about airspace.
So.
When it comes to land use decisions, they say those are local. They'll say exactly the same thing that we're saying.
So they're, they're not going to step in and, and stop a project?
No.
Um.
Now, they might for an airspace issue, you know, but, but again, they, they, that's what they care about is the air, not what's happening on the ground.
The height of?
The height, that's right. Yeah, so if something that was, was going to be built that was going to cause an obstruction to a flight path, an approach path, you know, so they have, when you, when you look at the FAA's airspace, they have different slopes that they protect. It's called, they call them Part 77 surfaces. And so, for example, an approach slope into a runway could be a 20 to one, a 34 to one, or a 50 to one flight path. And so that's, that's what they're really interested in, is, is those types of surfaces.
So if it's a church, a steeple could, could be an obstruction potentially?
It could, yeah. Yeah, and so, but when it comes to, to Part 77, what the FAA says about it is, it doesn't necessarily, if something's going to poke up through one of those surfaces, it doesn't necessarily mean it's a problem. It just means they want to take a closer look at it. But they do the same thing that we do. When they look at an obstruction or potential obstruction, they give it a finding, and they give it, you know, three findings, the same way we do. It's either compatible, conditional, or incompatible.
So we can look at these in a case-by-case scenario and find out what's best for the, each parcel as we move forward.
You can, yeah.
And that's not picking and choosing, that's just looking at things objectively.
Yes.
Okay.
A question. So just to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Brazel's point, the, the grant assurance 21 that you talked about, that, that impacts funding. So am I to understand, if I hear you correct, that it's almost, is it a more restrictive standard of that? If I can say it that way, in other words, we may be able to do something, and it might be allowable, but if we do something that's incompatible and the FAA has given us money, that money could be clawed back effectively?
Well, so what the, you have to remember, what, what grant assurance 21 says is that you're going to have some ordinances in place that protect your airport. So, you know, really, that's the key, is deciding as, as a local government and, you know, working with your planning officials, what do you want to allow around your airport? What kind of development? Now, the FAA, they're, they don't want to be involved in, in compatible land use decisions. They want you all to decide what you want to do in that regard. So grant assurance 21 doesn't say, yes, you have to have compatible land uses, and we're going to tell you exactly what they are. It just says, we, we need you to have compatible land uses, or land use protections in place.
There has to be something in place.
Yeah.
And we define that.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not.
Yeah. Now, we would love, we would love to be involved in helping you with that. We, and in fact, we have the model zoning ordinance that works behind the CLU Tool. We have that ordinance written up in documentation, and it's, it's a really good starting point place. You know, if you wanted to take that, or if your planning officials wanted to take that and used it to build off of, we can give it, give that to you. You can go through it, and you can go, I mean, you can go through all the, the recommendations in there and go, you know what, this one works for us, this one doesn't, let's change this. So yeah, we'd be happy to provide that to you. It's a great starting spot, and I'd love to work with you on it.
Is that CLU Tool currently in our tools list on our GIS overlay? Online? I know that we have like flood overlays and all that sort of thing. Is that something that we could potentially do?
Sure.
I see that you guys use Esri?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
If, if we can have that CLU Tool available to, to do the overlays so that landowners and ourselves alike can, can look at it and use it?
We can do that, yeah. We've provided that to other counties.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for those present? Any questions online, Mr. Jones or Mr. Tucker?
No questions.
All right, well, I thank you for your time, and thank you for indulging me, and we'll look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir. We hope that your daughter and the baby are doing well, safe labor, safe delivery, and I hope we can call on you again sometime remotely or in person to, to ask some more questions.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you so much. I'll, I'll give Gerald my card, and feel free to call on me anytime.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Safe travels. All right, council members, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion for those present? Seeing none, any discussion for those online? Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
No.
Okay. We call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. And those online, in favor, Mr. Jones, or opposed?
Yes.
I heard yes. Mr. Tucker, in favor, opposed? Mr. Tucker's still not able to hear you. But that was six in favor and not able to reach Mr. Tucker at the moment. The agenda is adopted. Mr. DeBose, how many folks do we have signed up for public comment?
Two people are signed for public comment.
All right, before we start that, I'll just note that this is a time for the public share information with county councils, not a question and answer, or time for response. It's time for council to get information from the public, and we welcome it. Mr. DeBose, who do we have first?
Brenda McCracken, signed to speak to trash and squatters.
Okay. If you would, just pull the mic down so everybody can hear you okay.
Um, I'm having a lot of issues with.
A little bit closer.
Lot of issues.
Yes, ma'am.
With squatters and trash being thrown in the community, and I receive letters and phone calls from the people that live in the community, and it's interrupting their lives and my lives. And the squatters are, are well-known through that little community, and I've got a bunch of pictures to show you. And I'm glad to see the sheriff is here in the mic, because I'm going to need to hear about it, but, um.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, keep speaking to the mic. We've got some folks joining us online, so if you're not in the mic, they can't hear.
All right. It's probably more of an issue for the sheriff's department, for Kershaw and Richland. I've had to deal with this for the last three years, and I'm not getting anywhere at all with either agency that I know of. It's, I mean, there's criminals down there. I can't go down there because I'm afraid, a lot of time, Kershaw has to escort me on my own property. And it's just, what can be done with the trash? I mean, it's just out of hand. There's, it's ridiculous.
And did you already provide your, excuse me, but I just want to make sure, do we have your address on the sign-up sheet?
Just the phone number, but.
Okay. All right, well, we have a way to contact you.
You're not going to collect that.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. And again, it's probably more of an issue for the sheriff's department to handle. It's, it's just, they take cars down there, they set them on fire, they set six of my acres on fire. Fire Department claims they don't know the cause of the fire. Well, you got people down there stealing metal in cars and burning it. I mean, it's just creating a, it's, it's, it's insane. Can't sleep. My sister lives down there, and she's terrified. There's wild dogs that chase me, they've killed some of her cats. And I just, I've been to an attorney, but the starting price of that, he said, is like $10,000. I've called DHEC because they're living underneath the power lines in tents and campers, and that's okay? And then yet, I pay taxes in two states and three counties, and I have no rights. They pay no taxes. They're, they're stealing out of the dump up there and bringing it all down there on its joint property. And because one of the people is involved, his name is on the deed, and that gives him more rights than it does me and my sister? Something's, something's not right. And I just, I need help. I need help for, these people are crazy. I've gotten pictures from some of the people down there where some girl, I don't know what kind of drug she was on, but she was half naked and flipping out in their driveway at 2:00 in the morning. I appreciate the time, and if anybody's got any suggestion of what I can do, I would love to know.
Thank you, Ms. McCracken. We have your contact information. I can see them pretty well from here. I appreciate you.
They've, and I've called DHEC, and DHEC has told me that I am responsible for all of the trash, and that if, if they find that the water has been contaminated, which these people take baths and one of the ponds is completely filled up with trash, that I am financially going to be held responsible for it. And, but then yet, I can't say anything to these squatters. So if y'all got any advice for me, I'd appreciate it, where I can take care of this, other than paying an attorney an enormous amount of money that I don't have.
Well, we, we've got your contact information. Thank you so much for providing it.
Yeah, thank you.
To the extent the county is involved, we'll make sure we follow up. Thank you so much. Mr. DeBose, you said there's another speaker?
Yes, Ms. Lynn Canto, speaking on solar.
Cando? Ms. Lynn?
Canto.
Canto. Okay, Ms. Canto.
My name is Lynn Canto, and I live at 1265 Sanders Creek Road in Cassett or Camden, South Carolina. My line is actually on the border of Camden and Cassett. I'm here to talk about solar because apparently I think a solar farm is coming to my area soon. And I had to put a lot of thought into this because I really didn't know a lot about solar, and I had some concerns that I felt like our county needed to address in making decisions on solar in the future. In reviewing, I noticed that the life expectancy of most solar farms is 25 to 30 years, but some of the neighbors of that area have found that some of the contracts for solar are going to be up to 50 years. So what's going to happen to those solar panels in that timeframe, since they degrade after 25 to 30 years? Solar farms require reduction in trees, reduce habitat for life, wildlife, increase temperature, and in my area, will cause soil erosion and runoff into Sanders Creek that flows into Colonial Lake, then down to the river. There'll be dust issues in our community, and this impacts our neighborhood. But the main thing is quality control for the solar panels. Who's going to maintain them and keep them risk-free from fires when vegetation grows in that area? For those of you who've lived in Kershaw County, you know that in March 1985, 2,368 acres and eight homes were burned in that same community. So the big question is, what is the amount of time that Kershaw County is going to allow for leases of land for solar panels? And who's going to monitor that for the county? Who's going to remove it afterwards? I was brought to my attention that in some contracts, there is no agreement for removal of those panels. So here's some what-ifs and the impact of natural disaster. You see September 7th, 2004, just next door at Evergreen Training Center, an F3 tornado picked up a horse, four-horse trailer and put it on top of a barn and took the roof off and knocked over my husband's starting gate. This is right next door to where they're considering putting in some of those solar panels. What's the impact of hurricanes on these panels? And in doing a lot of research, there is not a lot of information on this, which does concern me. Values increase for the property owner who have the solar panels, but decrease for the neighbors in that area. The distance from that residence, according to research, is about 1.86 miles from solar panels. My property is exactly 1.8 miles from the considered location. What is the harmful EMF exposure? There is some concern about that from the WHO organization as of 7/26/23. So for my friends who actually literally have property next door, the declining property value, homes within 528 feet to a mile have a 7% decline in property value, and a half mile, 1.5% decrease in property value. It can be an eyesore. Some say solar panels can even interfere with cell signals, and just for, for me and the country, cell signals are already a problem. So I would hope that it wouldn't get worse. So what does this have to do with the council? Please take into consideration all of these things when you look at applications for solar panels, and whether the people who are going to put these in and maintain them, and the property owners, what the impact of the neighbors, the owners, and the people who are supposed to be maintaining the solar panels are going to do for the, for that property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Canto. No other sign up?
No further speakers.
All right, gentlemen, that takes us to, back to public presentations. We have one more. This would be item 6A, Ms. Dolly Patton, regarding the MAD Festival. Please come up, Ms. Patton.
Good evening. Chairman Connell and council members, I'm so excited to be here to talk about the Art Center and our upcoming MAD Festival. So I've got a little preview of an ad that's going to run on WLTX shortly.
Get ready for a week of madness at the MAD Festival 2024. Join us on October 9th through 13th for five unforgettable days of music, art, drama, and dance in downtown Camden and Kershaw County. This year's festival promises vibrant performances, an art gallery crawl, music trail, and Saturday's MAD extravaganza. Perfect for families and art enthusiasts alike, visit our website. Visit our website at madfestivalcasey.org to learn more. Buy your tickets today, and we'll see you from October 9th through 13th at the MAD Festival.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, we can hear you. Ms. Patton, if you'll pause one second. I don't think the audio is set up to, um, to have you hear very easily called in on the phone, perhaps on the YouTube channel or otherwise. It was a short commercial of what's going to be done at the MAD Festival and just promoting that event.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I lost, I just could not hear her. She came back to the mic.
Yes, sir.
I'll speak up. How's that? I'm so happy to be here to talk about the MAD Festival. We've got a little PowerPoint presentation for you right here. Oh, that's the last slide. You know, there's no more special place than Kershaw County where we can celebrate our classic Southern charm and our Southern creativity, and that's what the MAD Festival is all about. There we go. Thank you. So as you can see, MAD Festival 2024, classic Southern charm, contemporary Southern brilliance. As you know, the mission of the Art Center is to provide transformative experiences to everyone in Kershaw County. And what sets us apart is there are only two arts organizations in our state that offer comprehensive programming, events, and educational opportunities in all four mediums of art. So we are very unique. And the other piece that makes us super special is that we are celebrating the 50th anniversary this year. So for 50 years, the folks here in Kershaw County have been providing art to everyone. If you have a chance and you haven't done so already, come see our Basset Gallery, where we take a walk down memory lane, and you can see posters and photographs and scrapbooks and costumes and 50 years of memorabilia that took us numerous hours to coordinate. So I hope that you'll come, uh, take a walk with us and see that. So I'm excited to tell you that, even though this slide's a little off, we welcomed 20,000 people last year to our programs, our classes, and our events, children and adults. This, the great news about this is it's an 18% increase over last year. And those folks experienced music, art, drama, and dance, which is what the MAD Festival is all about. When we created the MAD Festival, we had three main goals in mind. We wanted to attract tourists to Kershaw County. We wanted to brand Kershaw County as the arts capital of the Midlands, aim high, and we wanted to drive revenue for local businesses. So this slide that you see is an ad that's going to start running this week, and it gives some examples of what you're going to see at the MAD Festival, but it also spotlights our supporters, the City of Camden, Kershaw County, and the Downtown Cultural District, as well as the Arts Commission. We received a little grant this year from them. But we have a lot of other partners that are involved, and there are local spaces that are involved in the actual event. So you have the Methodist Church in Bethune, we have Grace Episcopal Church and Littleton Street Methodist here in Camden, we have four restaurants, six art galleries, and several other local businesses. So what does our five-day festival look like? We start out on Wednesday, October 9th, with our Chamber Music Day and a group called Some Strings Attached. And because education is the number-one goal in our strategic plan, we're taking that group to the Boys and Girls Club for an education program. It's super fun, the kids loved it last year. Then we have noontime chamber music, which is something that is a throwback to the original MAD Festival at Littleton Street Methodist Church. So folks who need a lunch break to hear some music, come on over. And then in the evening, we go to the Bethune Methodist Church with that same group. On Thursday, we invite you to join us at the Town Green for Two Cool Activities. The Power Company, the Dance Group Collaborative, is going to teach us all how to dance from 6:00 to 6:30 before Chris Daniels and the Kings take over. And so everybody gets to have a dance lesson, and then you'll be able to dance through the concert. It'll be a lot of fun. Chris Daniels and the Kings, they play a lot of rock, soul, and funk. They sometimes build themselves as a European blues, so it'll be super cool. On Friday is our gallery crawl and our MAD Music Trail, and we've got our, our gallery, the Basset Gallery, will open with a show from Kirkland Smith. Now Kirkland is a classically trained figure artist, but several years ago, she started, got a, uh, interest in the environment and found objects. So the photograph that you see there of Marilyn Monroe is what she calls an assemblage, and that is made out of different hairstyling product pieces and makeup containers that she pulls together to make these portraits. She just spent a week up at North Central Elementary School in a partnership between us and the school district as an artist in residence, and the children created the logo of the school, the mascot of the school, with found objects, and they did a beautiful job. It'll be on display at the Art Center at that evening. And when you see it, those of you that, that know the school, there are three pieces in it that pay tribute to the three elementary schools that form North Central Elementary. I think you'll really enjoy that. That night, when we open our gallery, the art galleries in downtown Camden and the restaurants will have music and food and entertainment for this gallery and MAD Music Trail crawl. So it'll be a lot of fun. I believe Gallery 537 is hosting a karaoke night. So if you want to try your hand at singing, you can join us. Also, on Friday night, if you want to take a trip up to Bethune, the Mill Hands, which is a bluegrass band, will be performing. Saturday is the big day at the Art Center. It's our extravaganza. We'll have four bands. Prettier Than Matt is a band out of Columbia. They were just voted best Columbia band by the Free Times. John Wesley Satterfield is very well-known, and Three of a Kind is a band from Charlotte. And we close those bands with Reggie Sullivan, who just played at the Town Green a couple weeks ago. We've got an evening performance in our Black Box Theater with a smaller version of Chris Daniels Band. And outside at the extravaganza, we'll have food trucks and face painting and this marbleized painting that we're doing and several artists. So it's just a really great day of activities. And we close the MAD Festival on Sunday with a little jazz and a little Broadway. Jazz with Mark Rapp at Grace Episcopal Church, a jazz brunch, and then Broadway karaoke. So if you want to try your hand at belting out a Broadway song, come on over. So that's our big five-day festival here in Camden and Kershaw County, and it is thanks to the folks you see on that slide. Those are our sponsors and supporters for this year's event. If you see how much fun we're having and you want to be part of all that activity, you too can be a sponsor. We would love to have you. And anybody in the listening audience, just give me a call, but we're very fortunate to have this support. I have passed out a packet, or I think they're still laying over here, but each of you can have a packet. The left side talks about the MAD Festival, gives the schedule that we just went through, and the right side talks about the Art Center, all the things that we're doing our season this year. It has our new annual report for the 23-24 year, and it also has this button. Our board members started a campaign this year to raise some money for the Art Center. It's called 50 for 50. We're looking for 1,000 people to give us $50, so we can raise $50,000 in honor of the 50th anniversary. So if you're so inclined, I hope you'll join us in that as well. Art has an amazing way of transforming us, whether it's through emotions when you see a painting, or you are enjoying a play, or whether it is an uplifting moment when you hear a song at an outdoor concert. Art is pure magic. And we just want to thank you so much for helping us bring the MAD Festival and this magic to the people of Kershaw County and beyond. So I thank you for having us, and I look forward to seeing you at the festival.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Any questions from those council members present?
Just thank you for everything you do.
Any questions from those online?
No questions. Just, you did a great job, Dolly. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you. We have a lot of fun.
Ms. Patton, thank you very much. I'll just say, I know you're brave because you've actually had a couple council members embarrass themselves dancing at your facility before.
And the sheriff, where is he?
The sheriff, yeah. But whether it's the, the Blues Festival, music, dance, or pottery, you really do a lot in the community. So thanks for bringing this to us tonight.
Thank you. We have an outstanding organization and a great board and wonderful supporters. We're just happy to be here.
Glad you got those steps reinforced, because I know two of the members of this council almost broke them.
You got to come take the tour. The building looks great, and I tell that story all the time, which, by the way, the bathroom project kicked off today with some testing and plumbers, and so I'll be back to talk about that. Please come see it. I've got drawings, happy to, to show it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is number seven, approval of the minutes. I'd ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
All right, do we have a second?
About a second.
And any discussion, I will be abstaining.
I will be abstaining as well.
Okay, we have two abstentions. Don't see any discussion. For those present, all in favor, raise your hand. We've got Mr. Schumake, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Cato, and Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Jones is abstaining, and Mr. Tucker, how do you vote? Still, still not able to reach him. Well, I've received a text just for council's information and the public's information. Every once in a while, he's saying he's able to access and is on, but we're not able to reach him again. So if you record that, please, Ms. Hannah. All right, and so the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, under discussions only, no action or vote to be taken. Mr. Jones has placed this on the agenda. Mr. Jones, do you have a motion?
I so moved.
Okay, and it's regarding full report of easements and right-of-ways for Pecan Orchard. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll give a second for the, uh, the report.
Second by Mr. Brazel. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I have a few questions. I think all of us know where the flooding is going on, not only in our Pecan Orchard over here, but many other subdivisions as well in Kershaw County. And what I'm concerned in, where the orchard is placed, is not only do they have runoff, and I'm, obviously, we know it comes from Lashkar Road and runs down through the orchard, but it's also becoming, or could be becoming, a health hazard because of septic tanks being overflowed, um, having sewage water or drainage water running through people's yards. So I have some questions, maybe the county administrator or somebody on council, if you can answer these. What easement rights, or let's just, what easements or rights of, excuse me, what easements or right-of-ways does the county have in the Peach Orchard Road subdivision lots? Mr. Temple, can you answer that, or either Mr. John DeBose?
I would not have the information to answer that question, but Mr. DeBose, did you hear the question?
Yes. My understanding is that the roads were originally private roads, platted as such, but my understanding is that sometime, I believe in the 90s, those roads were, came into the county system. Don't have particulars on that, but therefore, I believe the county right-of-ways would, for the roads, would be the same width of what is platted in the subdivision plat. I'm not intimately familiar with any other easements within that subdivision, other than one drainage easement that the county obtained. It might have been three to five years ago, one specific easement within the subdivision. I know Mr. Templar and his staff have been looking into this in greater detail, so he might be able to correct or add to what I've stated.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I've, I've done a deep dive into this. So we, we, from the onset, I've said we've had 66 feet of right-of-way on every road in there. And so we do have a, uh, an easement we purchased for the outflow on the Plum Thicket area that goes out to just behind the DOT rest area. And then any other easements we would have would be within the 66-foot right-of-way of all of our roads in there. We, we've researched this through the Register of Deeds, have some documents sent from the old administrator in 1995 to the developer out there, letting him know, letting the developer know that there would be 66-foot of right-of-way. So that's, that's what we have out there. We've, we've established that a while back.
If, if I can, I thank you so much, Mr. Temple and Mr. DeBose. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. But let me ask you this. Does the county have any easements over the property, Mr. Temple, where Rose Jackson and the Burning, the Burning, I think the Burning family? Was there an easement gotten on that when that was installed?
So that would be just within the confines of that, uh, so from the center line, you go 33 feet either direction. So there would be an easement within that area beyond that. We, not to my knowledge, and we've researched it, that, does that easement extend past what the road allows us?
So are you saying that our easements, we have, we have automatic easements between each house if we need it for drainage?
No, not, it wouldn't extend that far, but just the way that lot is shaped, our easement carries a little further into that property of those two parcels than it would any other lot out there.
Because I've gotten some complaints that, concerns about the easement where that property was put on the Jackson, where the easement, excuse me, the drainage was put on the Jacksons. There was permission gained by that, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes, was it, there was permission granted when you, when the line was ran down the Jackson property, correct?
It was at the request of the homeowner, and then we put in, um, we covered the ditch with, we installed pipe and then covered that within our, um, right-of-way.
So basically, we have the right to do that with no permission from the property owner?
Within our area, um, within our right-of-way.
Because one family is telling me that 40 feet of that property, well, it's on, maybe it's on one piece of property, then 40 feet of it at the very end goes on to another family's property, and that that's where they were getting some raw sewage that was coming out.
I, I wouldn't know anything about raw sewage out there. Short of a failure of drain lines or septic tanks, I don't know why there would be raw sewage out there.
But, well, let me, let me ask this, neither one of y'all can speak, about the drainage work that has been done by the county in the Peach Orchard subdivision. How much work have we done, let me in that?
We, we've done considerable amount of drainage work throughout the entire development on both ends. Just some of it was engineered and, and came at hundreds of thousands of dollars, other was just as needed and done with staff.
Yeah, I know about 10 years ago, we had some drainage work done, and I had pushed that, and that was pretty expensive. I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, but I was also about 10, 12 years ago on that one. Here's what I would like to ask, I need to see the documents given to the county for permissions of the easements. Do we have that available, don't we?
Yes, I have them all in my office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any others present have any discussion? Mr. Tucker, if, if you're able to hop on or can hear us?
I'm still there. Yeah, I'm here. I'm good.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Okay. With that, there's no vote. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We're into ordinances now. Item 9A, this is going to be first reading case 22, 24, excuse me, dash 22, an ordinance to amend Kershaw County ZLDR, Section 3, colon, 3.26, regarding solar farms requiring applicants to have a community meeting in advance of submitting a conditional use application and related requirements. Is there any motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Mr. Tomlinson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Cato, thank you. Mr. Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm guessing, can we get a brief from staff to come up and kind of give an overview about the recommendations for planning its owning?
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of council. At the direction of this body, we brought a text amendment to the Planning Commission. The specific language in that was to require applicants for large-scale solar farms to conduct a community meeting, as well as notify... to conduct a community meeting as well as notify everyone within one-third of a mile from the boundary, from the project boundary of the large-scale solar farm, and to report back to us a list of names of attendees, who they notified, and then a summary of the meeting. The Planning Commission took up that text amendment, and they made one amendment to that draft language that you sent down to them, and that was to extend the notification for property owners to a distance of one mile from the project boundary. So that was the one change that was provided to you from the Planning Commission.
So before, or the amendment originally was going to be one-third of a mile from the boundary? And what is our setback distance? So say a property's 200 acres or something. What is the setback from the property line to when?
So it varies, it varies if it's budding a residentially-built property. Let's say there's a house on it. So it's either going to be 50 or 100 feet, depending upon that variable, from the road right of way.
Okay. And are there any requirements to the direct property owners of that property proposed? I know that you have to, I guess this is saying you have to send out a mailed notice, correct? Is there any requirement that states that the company has to go meet face-to-face, or at least attempt to meet face-to-face with adjacent property owners?
Yes, that would be the intent of this text amendment, is that they would actually hold a community meeting with whoever attends from that one-mile notification.
Okay. I know that, kind of looking at over the country, a lot of good solar companies like to meet directly with adjacent property owners, one-on-one. And I know a mailed notice is kind of tough. And I like having the mile radius because it hits a wider range of people. But the directly budding up property owners, I think it could be a good thing to potentially add, or maybe get your recommendation on this, potentially adding in that they have to at least make three attempts to meet face-to-face with that property owner.
So with directly?
A direct engagement, and the rest would be mailed. And that way, we can, with three attempts and plus the mail, the direct property owner should be aware at some point of the solar. Mr. DeBose?
Would the, would the three attempts to meet directly budding property owners, are those like documented door knocks, or like phone calls? Or would they be three mailed notices in addition to the community meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think it could be combined of the three. But you would have to have proof of documented, go into the property, or calling, leaving a voicemail, trying to schedule a meeting with that person, that could be as well. But I think the three attempts for adjacent property owners is important, just to keep people informed. Yeah, maybe one certified mail. And that can be something we can look at, second reading or something going forward. We may need to get staff to kind of put something together that works. But I'll let, y'all have any questions or recommendations with that?
Yeah. Mr. Cato, you have the second?
No, I agree completely with my colleague. I like, first of all, appreciate what you've done here. Myself and Mr. Jones and Mr. Tomlinson, the whole group, kind of put this together and sent it to you, and I appreciate what you've done. I think maybe we can do a few adjustments sometime here in the next reading or two to try and get this thing ironed out. But I do like what Mr. Tomlinson's saying. Maybe to the adjacent property owners, we could have three different attempts. Maybe one of those could be a certified mail, and then maybe two other forms of direct contact.
Anything else? Mr. Schumake, did you have anything?
You're not proposing an amendment tonight, right?
No, I just want to get a recommendation. This is something we can look at for second reading.
Yeah, I'd like to think about it. I have some thoughts, but if we're not doing that tonight, I'll just reserve those.
Thank you. Any other discussion from those present? Seeing none? Mr. Jones, online, any discussion?
Yes, thank you so much. Mr. Schumake, if I may. I actually, by the way, Councilman Thompson, I like your proposal, whether it's an amendment or whatever. I think the more air we can put on this, the more sunshine we can put on it, the better it's going to be for our citizens who own that property, and they're not getting blindsided by a solar farm company coming in and just putting up. Anyway, but I thank y'all for that, and I appreciate it very much, Mr. Cato and Mr. Thompson, for your hard work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
No, sir, I'm good with everything done, was discussed, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Not seeing any more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, those present, raise your hand. Mr. Jones, yes?
I'm sorry, I had a question. Why couldn't we not go ahead? Are we planning on doing an amendment at the next meeting?
There is no amendment on the table tonight, on first reading.
Okay. I'm in favor of first reading.
Okay. So back to the vote. Those in present, all in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous, present. Ms. Hannah, for those online, Mr. Jones?
In favor.
In favor. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
A yes from Mr. Tucker. Thank you, gentlemen. It passes first reading. That brings us to item 9B. This is first reading, case 2424. Mr. Joey, you might as well just stay up here. We've got you for a little bit. This is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map. It's a rezoning of 10-plus or minus acres of the tax map number that's identified in the public record. This is in the Cassett area. Mr. Cato, do we have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve first reading on this proposed rezoning.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Schumake. You want staff to give us a summary?
Please.
If we can get a summary, please, Mr. Joey.
This actually went to the Planning Commission, and that was on September 9th. And they voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation of this to you. There were six members present.
For those online, can you please hit mute?
Excuse me for that.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Tucker, can you please hit mute?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this property is located east of Camden on Highway 1, just past the intersection of Poulsen or Porter Road, excuse me, to the east. And if you're familiar where Midway Grill is, unfortunately, Midway Grill suffered a tragic fire several months ago. But this is the property that directly abuts Midway Grill to the west, just to the west. It's about 10 acres in size. Currently, it's completely surrounded by RD2 zoning, which is your rural resource district zoning. As you can see on the map in front of you, what they are wanting to do, the property owner is to rezone to General Development District, which is that red-colored districts that you see on your map. To the west is just vacant timberland. To the east, that's actually the Prestige Farm operation. And what I believe is those were actually put in place back in 99 with countywide zoning. The applicant has some specific uses, of course, that he has in mind to use on the property. And Mr. Jeffers is here tonight, if you have any questions of him. But in general, even though this is a parcel that's not directly abutting another general development district, which we like to see contingency with zoning cases, it is of size where we believe would void the spot zoning issue. And your comp plan does support rural-type services for rural residents in those rural areas of the county. So again, this comes with a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Mr. Cato, you have the motion?
I've made the motion.
Any discussion?
Oh, no discussion.
Okay, any discussion from those present?
Just briefly. One thing I wanted to, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Jeffers, or just more of a comment, I guess. The only thing that gives me any pause, and I'm certainly going to vote for it tonight, but the only thing that gives me any pause, and we've had this come up somewhat recently, is, you know, obviously, any zoning use is allowed once we go forward. Correct. So in general development, I would say, it's fair to say, is probably our most permissive zoning regulator district. And RD2 is among our most restrictive.
That's fair.
So whenever we take a piece of property that's, you know, more than just an acre or two, and move it from our least restrictive, or most restrictive to least restrictive, I just want to, I just want to raise the point that I'll probably support this based on, and I know where the zoning rules are based on what can be done, not what will be done. But I'll probably vote for this, but I do have some concerns about rezoning. And so, and I said this at the last time, I don't know how often I'll support these, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware that we are taking a property and taking it from the most restrictive use in the county to the least restrictive use.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Any other discussion from those present? Seeing none? Mr. Jones, online, any discussion?
Yes, please. Schumake, I'm inclined to agree with you on your comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
No, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are the property owners present?
Yes, Mr. Jeffers is here tonight.
Sure. Would you like to share anything about the rezoning?
Gentlemen, I'm here tonight to answer any question or concern you may have for my plans for this property. I don't know whether you've got the idea of what we're going to put there, but our intention is to build a barber shop for my daughter, and we plan to move part of my garage operation out there. Some of you have been to my garage here in town. I can assure you, it is a well-kept, clean. We go through a lot to keep it that way. We go through guidelines to take care of petroleum products, fluorocarbons. We have machines to take care of all that. Ethylene glycol is taken care of. We don't even, in our shop, we don't even use common oil dry. It's all put in pigmat and disposed of properly, which will go on to the site if it's approved in Cassett. There's not a whole lot of industry in Cassett yet, but I feel that it's going to grow. East Camden is going that way because they run out of room in Lugoff, and we want to be part of that. Does anybody have a question about what I'd like to do?
I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jeffers, correct?
Yes.
I just have a comment. I think this is a good example of how in Kershaw County, you have some areas that have different needs than others. Whereas you might have a very restrictive, or the most restrictive zoning going to the least restrictive, it'd give you maybe greater pause in an Elgin or a Lugoff area. But when you're desperate for growth, and really seeking growth, and want population to justify other improvements in certain areas, you have to view it through a little bit different lens, and still try to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which I think we heard from the director tonight. So I appreciate your comments and sharing this with us. Any other discussion or questions from those present?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
If you're done. I'd like to say that our family business started out in the Pine Grove community in a rural area, and it was a shop situation. So I know the importance of a family business and how much pride you take in it. I appreciate you being here tonight, not only to tell us what you're doing, but to give us an example of what you, of how it is your business, and you're not a developer just looking to gain a profit from a rezoning. So thanks for coming tonight. I'll support this 100%.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, each of you.
If you would, one second. Any comments or question from those online? Mr. Jones?
None.
Mr. Tucker?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, call for the vote. All those in favor, on first reading, raise your hand. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous in person. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes from Mr. Jones. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
That's a yes from Mr. Tucker. It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Hannah. All right, that takes us to the next item on the agenda. We are on 9C. First reading of an ordinance by Kershaw County Council authorizing the conveyance of a parcel of land of one acre with the tax map number identified to the Community Medical Clinic of Kershaw County, a nonprofit corporation. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Schumake, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cato, thank you. Mr. Templar, we've got your name down here. Would you mind updating us on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I would, I think that there was some, well, I don't know if it makes sense to do discussion now, but I have an amendment to this. We had discussions with the county attorney before the meeting, and I think an amendment may be necessary. So I'm fine to hold that amendment till after Mr. Templar discusses this.
Yeah, let's get a general update on what's going on, and then we'll entertain your amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have before you a conveyance of property which the county currently owns. This property was purchased with the CDBG grant back prior to constructing a community medical clinic. I think the ordinance does a really good job of pointing out the nuances of what is being asked here to convey this land. This was captured in a memorandum of understanding back in 2004, where the county agreed to convey this land and improvements to the clinic after 20 years. That clock started August 30th, 2004, so we have, that time has expired. So I feel this is appropriate to go ahead and clean up. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for that summary. Mr. Schumake, do you have a motion?
I do. I'll make the motion here. I'm going to move to amend this item specifically in the now-there-for section of the ordinance to read as follows, that the clinic agrees to maintain a nonprofit medical clinic on the land, and if the property improvements they're on are sold at some later date, the proceeds of the sale shall be restricted to use for elements, you know, that should be, you know, I tried to practice reading this word because it's a very difficult word, elementsary. Did I say that right, Mr. DeBose?
Close enough.
Close enough, elementsary purposes. Subject to approval by Kershaw County Council, and I move that the deed restriction be amended in a substantially similar form to restrict potential future sale proceeds to nonprofit public purpose uses, subject to county council approval. And I can explain that after I get a second.
Okay, we had a, have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Mr. Schumake, any further comments on your motion?
Well, first off, they asked, they asked, well, now, one of the two lawyers to do this because of that very long word that I immediately butchered. So thanks for that, guys. The other reason is basically what this does is this puts some prohibitions if the health clinic were to say, you know, if they were to want to sell that, it wouldn't allow them to basically flip the land. I mean, is that a fair description?
Correct. The property was purchased with public funds, CDBG block grants 20 years ago. If the CMC outgrows, the clinic needs more space, needs to convey it, this would just make sure that any proceeds from that sale are used for public purposes, nonprofit public purposes. That way, that original public money from 20 years ago does not get converted to private money, for lack of a better term.
Okay. Any other discussion? None from those present? Any discussion online? Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Tucker, any discussion on the amendment?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, we've got an amendment and a second, no further discussion. Let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous in person. For those online, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes from Mr. Jones. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
That's a yes online from Mr. Tucker. Thank you very much. It's unanimous, Ms. Hyler, on the amendment. And Mr. DeBose, I just want to make sure now we vote on it as amended, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's go back to any further discussion on the proposed first reading passage as amended? Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Councilman Schumake for reading the amendment. I didn't even want to take a stab at that.
I did a Google, I did a Google thing to pronounce it five times before I came out here, and the second I got to it, my brain forgot how to pronounce it.
Still messed it up.
Lawyers, geez.
None of us are perfect. Okay, seeing no further discussion. None of us are perfect. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, uh, from those in person, any discussion online? Mr. Jones?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Tucker?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We'll call for the vote then. All those present, raise your hand if you're in favor as amended. It's unanimous in person, Ms. Hannah. And for those who are remote, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes from Mr. Jones. Thank you. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
That is a yes from Mr. Tucker. Thank you very much. Ms. Hannah, if you'd record those, it passes first reading on nine C. Uh, item number 10 on the agenda, gentlemen, is just for information only. It's working on getting, um, planning commission appointments in the packet for the required cycle beforehand. We would ask that, um, the planning commission appointment gets put on for the next meeting so that we can actually have a vote on it. And, uh, I've spoken with Mr. Jones about that. So, that needs no action or no further information. We move on to item number 11, old business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Could I, could I just make one, one comment on the?
Oh, Mr. Jones, go ahead. Sure.
I think we talked about in my district to make the nomination, and, and I wonder if I know that I am, but we putting Jonathan Proctor on there just for your advance notice.
Okay. I, I was holding out and wasn't sure if you're gonna be able to come in person at some point, uh, maybe next meeting or meeting after, but, um, we can certainly address it next meeting if that's okay with you.
I hope so. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and we hope you're recovering well.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, that takes us to item number 11 on the agenda. Uh, under old business, the finance committee met yesterday. We had Mr. Schumake, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Tucker meet, and, uh, I'd seek a motion. This will require some action. I'd seek a motion to put this up for discussion.
I'd move to put it up for discussion.
Well, I think it's actually gonna require, uh, a vote.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may?
Yeah, we just need a motion so we can discuss it.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, um, to discuss and take a vote, uh, on the finance committee recommendation.
Okay, sounds good. And I cleared from the attorney that we can do it in two parts after, uh, it gets on the floor. Need a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Schumake, seconds. Mr. Tucker, please.
Yes, sir. Can everyone hear me clear and okay? If not?
You're coming through well.
Okay. So, for some reason, because I'm actually moving from work now, if the phone drops, uh, Mr. Schumake, you or Mr. uh, Tomlinson, please take over, um, and I'll call back in. But we had a very, uh, positive and productive meeting yesterday. We had, uh, few visitors, uh, from the Pecan Orchards that joined us, uh, staff, um, with some ex, expertise with engineering to help answer some of the questions, and, um, we came up with a couple of recommendations. And, um, I will ask my colleagues to chime in. If I happen to miss something, feel free to step up and talk. Uh, first thing we discussed, uh, which caused no action was the fourth quarter budget. Um, everything ended well with our finances. Um, we end up, uh, looking very positive, uh, with our fourth quarter and over, overall, uh, 23, 24 budget. And I won't go into major details, but if any council members need that packet, um, just let Ms. Hannah or staff know, Ms. Lauren or, um, Mr. Durrell or Mr. Danny, and they'll get that to you so you can, um, peruse it. Um, but there was no, um, no discrepancies or any concerns, uh, when staff presented that to us. So, with that being said, that was, uh, first item on the agenda. Next was, uh, we talked about, uh, how do we move forward with, um, trying to deal with stormwater? And, um, we took this as a holistic approach where, um, we were thinking about, no matter what you do, you're gonna need some type of continuous funding moving forward. And so, uh, the finance committee took recommendations from staff on approving the study and, uh, the recommendations they're gonna bring back to implement a stormwater committee or commission or whatever you wanna call it. Um, Danny can elaborate on that if he lacks any further, but this is what the study would bring back and also bring back how would we pay for stormwater moving forward. And when I say stormwater, I'm talking about, uh, subdivisions, I'm talking about, um, retention ponds, I'm talking about dirt roads. So, remember what I said at the beginning, a holistic approach throughout the county. And so, with that being said, um, if one of y'all have the, uh, survey there, uh, of the plan that you can share with the other council members, that would be great. Um, it would take 18 to 24 months to implement this, and we're gonna recommend that we spend the $72,000 that this would cost. I will identify where the money's coming from in a moment. Is there any questions on that part or discussion?
Any further discussion from those present? Any discussion from those online? Mr. Jones?
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Jones?
Can you hear me?
Hello? Yes, sir. I'm listening.
Hey, listen, so you're, how long is this study gonna take?
18 to 24 months.
So, what do we do about the, the devastated areas in our county right now while we do another study, create another committee, create, create another department or create whatever other bureaucracy? The admin, when the administrator said, he was willing to call this a flood disaster, he had authority to do that. We have a fund for that, and due to the circumstances of certain residential areas, I'm just concerned as to why that wasn't of any greater topic.
Okay, if I'm hearing you correctly, are you a little breaking up, but, um, that is a holistic report because we have more than just one subdivision that needs our attention, Mr. Jones? And so, the committee is just not trying to cure one problem. We're trying to cure many problems. So, um, you didn't allow me to finish up with my second part of the recommendation that came out of the, uh, committee, but, um, we did address some issues for Pecan Orchards, if you would like for me to continue.
Please continue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything on the stormwater management plan?
No, Mr. Tucker. We very much need to he, hear part two. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, part two was, uh, we came, um, staff recommended, uh, several things to make sure that, um, the county was doing what was responsible and what was needed, uh, for the residents of Pecan Orchards, such as survey, um, the, uh, design and preparation of the construction, uh, plan, um, and, uh, the hydro, what is it, hydro?
Hydrology?
Hydrology study as well, uh, for the watershed. So, with all that, um, that came from staff, a recommendation, and it is the map to move forward because we can go in that subdivision and just start digging willy-nilly, and we can make things a lot worse than what they are. Um, that came as a recommendation for staff, $138,003, and the committee, uh, recommends that as well, uh, for approval by council to start that process. Now, that is not gonna put a shovel in the ground tomorrow. That is not going to fix their problem by the end of this month, but it will get things started in the right direction so, uh, the county will know exactly what the plan is to give these folks some relief of their, uh, water problems. I'll take questions.
Any discussion from those present?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a comment on, uh, the part B, um, regarding the Pecan Orchard. I've been there and, and was at the, helped, helped host a meeting, uh, with the, the neighborhood and the community. It's, it's a real need. It's, and I know there are other needs, and we haven't seen all of them, but, um, the Pecan Orchard is, is a, I hate to say, use the word desperate, but it, it's, it's in pretty, pretty bad shape with all the, uh, silted-in ditches and, um, lack of ditches, to be, to be quite frank. Uh, we've got to put this at the top of the list, and we gotta get it fixed. Um, Councilman Tucker, I appreciate everything that you did and, um, the time that you and the finance committee spent getting this together. I know it took a little longer than some folks would like, but I look forward with moving, moving on down the road with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You, Councilman Brazel, you're, you're quite welcome. And if I can, Ms. Chairman, I wanna say that, um, and give my cohorts a chance to speak if they have anything, Councilman Tomlinson and, and Councilman Schumake, but let me say this. The folks that was in that room from that subdivision were, uh, more than hospitable and understanding of what we were trying to do as a finance committee and what we were recommending, and they, and they were very thankful and grateful for what we are recommending. They, they were above and beyond, uh, citizens' approach, um, and we appreciate that. I, I just wanna state that for the, for the record.
Yes, Mr. Tucker, their, their attention continues. They're present here tonight. So, thank you. Any other?
Well, they're doing better than me.
Any other discussion from those present? Any other discussion from those online?
Yes, to Mr. Tucker, please, Jimmy Johnson.
Go ahead.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
How long?
Yes, sir.
If this is passed by county council for, for the orchard, how long would your timeframe in that?
Okay, my timeframe on that could be a couple of, few months, uh, Mr. Jones. Not sure. The, the key part now is to get it funded so we can get started, but there's a lot of study has to be done, work with the, uh, surveys and the planning, um, and that's gonna be dictated by, you know, your engineers and surveyors and all that. But I can tell you, once it's approved, uh, we will get busy.
So, we're looking at maybe, um, about two months?
Yes, it could be. I, I, I don't wanna give you a timeline right off the top of my head, uh, without getting them started and let us, let them give us the feedback. But it's not the end of the month, and it won't be done next month. I can answer that, those two questions.
It won't be completed next month. It'll be worked on starting tomorrow if we approve this.
Yes, sir. We'll approve this. Staff, Mr. Temple, and staff will get on it and get the people lined up to, um, begin, uh, the process.
Well, I expect, and you're right, though, they are, they're, they're very polite, hospitable people over there, and they're, they're desperate. They need help, and it is our responsibility. And thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Thank you for that. Any further discussion before we shape up a motion on those numbers?
Ms. Chairman, make sure my colleagues don't have any, any more input, please.
Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Schumake?
I'm good.
I don't have anything.
You, you've done well, Mr. Tucker. And so, um, I just, I wanna make sure I distill what I just heard. So, I think we're seeking a motion that would include $78,000 being expended for a study for sto, stormwater, uh, improvements overall and how to address that in Kershaw County. And then, uh, another hydrology study specific to, uh, the Pecan Orchard that will allow us to know, first, do no harm and exactly what actions need to be taken. Um, is that, is that a fair assessment of, uh, what you're putting forward, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. It's 138, uh, point, 138 and $3 for Pecan Orchards and 72,000 for the, um,
72.
72,000.
72,000, yeah. 72,000 from the
All right, so.
Stormwater management plan, total of 21003.
Okay, so I would seek that.
Coming from emergency funding.
Both items sourced from emergency funding, correct?
Correct. I wanna make sure that's clear, that's no tax increase or increase to the budget, uh, from any line items.
Okay.
Well, I have a question.
Well, let's, let's get a motion if we can, unless you have a question that would pre, uh, precede that motion, Mr. Jones.
No, no, go right ahead.
Okay, can I get a motion on those particular numbers, expenditures, and the source?
I'd make that motion, Mr. Tucker.
Okay, go ahead.
Need a second? Mr. Tomlinson, seconds. Mr. Schumake's the first. Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
I, I, I was just gonna, um, explain all that, but they've already made the motion and second. I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? I think for the benefit of the council, having attended, uh, the meeting yesterday myself, would you just confirm for us that the source of funding is appropriate?
Yes, and I've, uh, one of the items I wanted to get back with the finance committee on was to just check with our auditors to make sure that the study indeed was a, uh, a viable, um, item from our emergency funding, and because it ties in with this issue, it, uh, it's more than applicable.
And you got that confirmation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion from those present? Any discussion from those online?
More of a question, Mr. Chair. Thank you. What is our balance in the emergency fund?
It's 2.2 million dollars.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those present, raise your hand if you're in favor. It's unanimous in person. Those online, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
I vote yes, and I'll be watching it with a fine tooth comb.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes, and I'll be putting my trust into the hands of the staff.
Okay. Uh, that's a yes from both online. It's unanimous, Ms. Hannah, if you'd record that, please. Thank you very much for your work on that, the finance committee, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Tomlinson, and then also staff, uh, for bringing all of that to our attention and for the citizens who've been so patient and, uh, looking for guidance and keeping everybody updated. All right, on to council member briefings. I'll just start to my left. Mr. Cato?
Caught me off guard.
We can get you down if you need. Remember, I'm left-handed, so.
Yeah, I, I told him when he got up here tonight, I didn't realize he was left-handed. Takes up all my space.
I've got a few things that I would like to bring to the attention of the people, great
people of Kershaw County, um, up in District Six. Um, Bethune has a senior citizens luncheon, uh, or luncheon, uh, that will start this Friday at 12:00 PM at the Bethune Community Center. So, they invite anybody, any senior to come out, and, uh, I think you, some churches classify you as a senior after 50, some of them 55. So, if you feel like you qualify, you're just going out. They'll, they'll accept you. Uh, Bethune will also have a Fall Festival on October the 25th, starting at 5:00 PM. They're also taking, um, I, I guess you'd call it applications for the Christmas Parade, which will take place on December the 21st. If you're interested in putting in a float or an item in the Christmas Parade, please contact Town Hall. Also, don't forget, while I'm on Bethune, don't forget the MAD Festival will be there October the 9th and the 11th. Um, they'll have two different dates up there, so, um, if you can, come out and support them. Mount Pisgah Resource Center has a, uh, cheers to 100 years celebration, and that will take place on November the 9th. Uh, on November the 9th, they are gonna celebrate the, um, 100th year of this building being in existence. So, this building was built 100 years ago and has, has housed many students and educated many, uh, country rural minds that have gone on to do some great things in this state and far beyond. So, if you would like, um, come out on November the 9th and, uh, to the celebration, they'll have all kinds of stuff up there for you to do and see. Um, also, they have opened a resource room. Um, this resource center has really taken off in this area. Um, I just wanna say thank you to all the ones, from the ones that got it started to the ones that's continuing the process, to all the ones that are working up there. They do a tremendous job. But they've opened up a resource room, and now it has, is available, and it has eight new computers for the community to use. So, if you have a student or if you have a, uh, something you need to do with your job, and you don't have access to the computer, then you're, you're welcome to use those. Um, but I, I, I thank them for their hard work and for their dedication to this process. They have their exercise room open. I think they have treadmills and different ellipticals and different things that you can go in there and use for, I think it's $20 a month. So, if you're up in, around that area and you're close by, you can take advantage of that. Other than that, I, I thank you. Um, thank you all, and, and look forward to October. I, I wanna bring out, uh, the first meeting in October, and I don't know, I don't wanna overstep my bounds, but, uh, the first meeting in October. I will be wearing pink. Um, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I have family members that have been affected by breast cancer, including my sister, and, uh, so I encourage council on the first meeting of October to wear pink.
Pretty in pink.
Pretty in pink, some of us. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Tomlinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to start out by welcoming, welcoming Mr. Connell here. First meeting back, and, um, really appreciate you and, um, your service to Kershaw County. We're excited to be spending the next couple of months together and doing good things. Um, I really appreciate all of staff's hard work. We, um, I think we've had three or four different finance committee meetings, uh, dealing with the stormwater issue, and staff has worked really, really hard to put everything together in the right approach. Um, I appreciate all my colleagues and everybody here, um, coming out and joining us tonight. Hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Online, Mr. Jones, any report?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a tropical storm alert, and it seems like they're saying, what can we see in South Carolina? That tropical storms, hurricanes, could be a statewide event, heavy rainfall, flash flooding, gusty winds, and tornadoes. I was just wondering maybe if I can, can administrative briefing will bring us up to date on how, how they plan to sort of follow that and watch it?
Okay, we'll, we'll solicit that in the administrative briefing. Any other report?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Schumake?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thanks again. Again, welcome aboard. I'm excited for what the future holds now that we're kind of back in full force. Again, I appreciate Mr. Cato's comments. I'll, I've got a few pink shirts, if they still fit, I'll dig them out. I appreciate everything we've heard. I just, again, I don't have much of a briefing. I just appreciate this county and everything that everybody does. As I always say, we are very hell-mess in every county.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Online, Mr. Tucker, any report?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to echo what Mr. Tomlinson said in reference to the Finance Committee and staff. I know that we can be a little difficult, we ask some of the hard questions, but that's the process. But staff is never disappointed or shy away from giving us the answers wherever they're what we want to hear, need to hear, or whatever the situation may be. So, I say thank you to all for making this process much better and more effective. With that, welcome, Chairman Cornell. I'm glad to know that now we have a full council and look forward to working with you and all of our other colleagues and moving forward. I appreciate Mr. Schumake only going next door to me, because if, if I lost him, then I would not serve anymore. So, I can handle you going to my right. With that also, I just want to apologize for tonight for not being there, but work calls, and I have to fulfill those obligations in order to be able to survive. So, thank you for your patience, for having me on the line and tolerating having to listen to some things you probably didn't want to listen to, but I appreciate all of you. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Can I say a couple of words? Can I say a couple of words?
Yes, sir.
About you. Let me say this. You and I worked together for six years. You left and went to the state, and you came back as chair, and I welcome you back. Look forward to working with you, and just want to say congratulations.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Brazel?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, as everybody has stated, congratulations, Ben Cornell, and glad to have you back. Spent two years with you, my first two years here on council and got to know you, and we appreciate all the service and all the help that you've lent while you were at the State House. There are many projects that wouldn't have happened, including the boat ramp that's coming at Veterans Park without your help on the state level. So, thank you for, for everything you've done, and welcome back. I'd also like to thank the families and homeowners in the pecan orchard for their patience. We promised a 90-day guarantee on, on our delivery of a plan, and today we have delivered that plan. It will take more time to put it into action, but I'm thankful for that.
Councilman Tucker? Mr. Tucker, please mute your phone. Mr. Tucker? Go ahead.
I got pissed like a racehorse.
Mr. Tucker, please mute your phone. Can you mute him?
I'd like to congratulate Councilman Tucker for, for having a, a party in his house tonight. It sounds like he's having a great time. No, it's, it's, it's fun stuff. I'd like to also wish Jimmy Jones a continued recovery. Jimmy, I know you've been battling a tough recovery, and it's always, it's good to see you and visit with you, and I'm glad you're doing well. You sound good, and looking forward to having you back in, in this room. And I'd also like to thank Councilman Schumake for proving he can pronounce difficult words tonight. That was, that was quite impressive, sir.
I wrote the pronunciation key right here.
I'd like to see that afterwards, so... All right, that concludes my briefings.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Very distinguished group grammatically and otherwise that I get to work with here tonight. Just a few things. I'm extremely grateful to be able to serve in Kershaw County. This is my hometown. I love this area so much, and it's the reason I've decided to come back and raise my family here. It is a blessing. I want to emphasize the professional nature of this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is not just to have Danny Templer there as window dressing, as fit and as good as he looks. This is an interaction between council to conduct the business of Kershaw County, to get reports from the administrator who works for council and thus has several staff members that work for him. So, that is the main purpose. That's the heart of this meeting. We have a lot of feel-good moments in here where sports teams or other folks get recognized or maybe someone passes away, and we do share deep condolences in those moments. But the main purpose is to have an interaction between this council professionally with a professional administrator and handling the business of the county. And so, that will be one of the thrusts of my tenure in your way as chair, and that's why I'm excited to work with a professional group of men. It's really actually seamless to be up here. If they were to tell you how many times, they probably heard from me more whenever I was at the State House than when I was on council, because every week or every other week, there was some, some issue that we had to try to take care of to secure state funding for. And so, it's a real blessing and honor to come back and work with all these gentlemen. Also wishing Mr. Jones a, a quick recovery, and I'm grateful to him for running an honorable race and look forward to working with him some more, though it won't be from two or three feet away, as we were for six years. I wanted to wish my dad, Joe, happy birthday. He's now got 19 grandkids and is just running around, living his best granddad life, chasing around these 19 grandchildren. And so, happy birthday to my dear dad, Joe, one of the kindest men I've ever known. I want to emphasize that we're open for business in Kershaw County, and so we look forward to having an improved reputation throughout the state of professionalism, being friendly to businesses that want to expand or come here and work. And so, if you're listening remotely or if you've got friends that are interested, we've got a great workforce. We've got people with hearts of gold in Kershaw County. They've got amazing skill sets, and we want you to come here and bring your business as well. I'm grateful to work again with the staff that we have in Kershaw County. It's that same type of person, hardworking, cares about the community, and they work here because of the, the lifestyle in part and the quality of life that you have in Kershaw County, which I also appreciate. Just a few things before we move on to the agenda. You've got the Fire Fest coming up. I have to mention that because my little boy Bennett and all those, and even some grown men and ladies, enjoy going out there and seeing the demonstrations and experiencing all the exhibits that they have. That's going to be 1:00 PM this Saturday at Camden City Arena, and I'm just trying to hit the high points I didn't hear mentioned. Old McCaskill's Farm, coming up, it'll be prior to our next meeting on October 8th, has Fall Family Day. If you've ever been out to the farm, it's a great family event. I encourage you to take your families out there and enjoy a special part of Kershaw County, which is our agritourism. Next meeting, October 8th, already mentioned that. That concludes my report, and yeah.
I got one more thing I need to mention once you're done.
Go ahead.
I have to wish my wife a happy birthday this Thursday. She's, you almost got me in trouble, but thank you for reminding me. Happy birthday, Casey.
We don't want you to get in trouble, Mr. Brazel. Thank you for that, and happy birthday, Casey. Okay, that concludes council member's briefings. The next item on the agenda is administrator's briefing. Mr. Templer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, member, members of council. I just have two items. Just first off, I want to thank council for allowing us to get it, get going with this stormwater study. This is going to solve a lot of problems that have been on our plate, and this goes back to when Vic Carpenter was here. We had always talked about really addressing stormwater in the county as a whole and coming up with viable solutions and holding these, some of these builders accountable. We've got, there's going to be a lot that comes out of this. There's, you know, we talk about building communities, but what we build, we must maintain, and this is part of maintaining our community and having a livable neighborhood for the citizens in Kershaw County. So, I'm excited about that. I, I know it's just another study, but this is going to be an actionable study, and this is going to allow me to guide staff and our efforts for the coming years. As it relates to the, the weather we have coming in, so we'll start pushing out information tomorrow. We always wait a little closer to see what these storms are going to do. I anticipate rain throughout the state, winds. The, the amount of rain is a concern as we're talking about stormwater. The ground is still pretty saturated from our previous weather events, so that, that comes with its own issues as well. So, I don't anticipate anything disastrous or anything significant. It's just going to be inconvenient, and I think we're going to get a lot of rain. So, again, we'll push that out for tomorrow as I get with staff and our emergency management team. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Mr. DeBose, any legal briefing?
Nothing tonight.
All right, that brings us to item number 15. We've got an executive session on the agenda. This would be a briefing and discussion regarding Project New Life. We would need the administrator, legal counsel, and the economic development director, Mr. Jeff Burgess. We'll have to take just a moment to, to bring those who are online in as well, and this would be under SC Code 30-4-70B, Items 2 and 5, Discussion of Negotiations Incident to Proposed Contractual Arrangements and Attracting or Causing the Expansion of a Business. Can I get a motion to go into executive session on those grounds?
I certainly move.
Mr. Schumake, can we get a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any discussion, gentlemen? Any discussion for those online? All right, hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. Those in present, how do you vote? Raise your hand if you're in favor. It's unanimous in present. Those online, Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
A yes from Mr. Jones. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote on executive session?
He's gone, Ben.
Oh, he's off, okay. We're not able to reach Mr. Tucker. He's off at the moment. All right, six members in favor, it passes. We're now in executive session.